Very good. Staff, we're ready to go. Very good, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm ready.
You're good? Okay. Board, we're good to go? Terrific. Thank you. Okay. Good evening. Welcome to, welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg Town Meeting for July 11th, 2022. At this time, I'll ask everyone in the room to silence or turn off their phones and do that in respect to the decorum of the meeting, please. Thank you. And now I'll ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and us as one.
Okay, good evening. So we'll get started with a few items. We have a number of folks who are running for public office, who in our tradition will speak first. We'll invite them up shortly. Our town meeting tonight is pretty straightforward. We are dropping one agenda item, agenda item number one, the public hearing consideration of proposal. Ordinance 22-07, the zoning text amendment application. So that will not be part of our agenda tonight. And with that, we turn to the first signed up here. I have a Mr. Mason Carter.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
You need to vote on the closed session first, please.
Oh, pardon me. Okay. So yes, we will be having a closed session related to the closed session. The Emmitsburg Mayor and Board of Commissioners intend to meet in closed session for the purpose of consulting with staff, consultants, and other individuals to discuss, one, a personnel matter relating to an employee performance evaluation, two, a personnel matter relating to the hiring of a new employer, employee, pardon me, and three, a personnel matter relating to the promotion of three current employees. The authority for meeting in closed session for this purpose is permitted by the general provisions of Article Section 3-305b subsection 1 Annotated Code of Maryland, which authorizes us to meet in closed session. The reason for closing the session is to preserve the confidentiality of personnel records as provided by the Maryland Public Information Act and the privacy of the employee. The Board of Commissioners will not be meeting in another open session after the closed session has ended. With that in mind, is there a motion? And if someone is willing to make the motion, I have the language here they will need to read.
Yes, sir. There you are.
All right, very good. Okay.
So here regarding the time, I would say at the end of our
I make a motion to close the July 11th. There we go. I make a motion to close the July 11th, 2022 Town Meeting at the conclusion of the regular Town Meeting for a closed executive session to discuss personnel matters set forth. In the written closing statement, the Board of Commissioners will not be meeting in another open session after the closed session has ended.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries four to zero. Commissioner Sweeney is not here tonight. He did advise us in advance that he will not be here for the rest of the evening. Moving forward. So as well as that satisfies the piece regarding the closed session. Very good. Okay. So now at this time, we invite a Mr. Mason Carter to come forward.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
I spoke with Mr. Carter. He is planning to be here around eight o'clock. He was thinking the public comments would hit around that time. He's running behind a little bit.
Okay.
So he's not here right now.
Okay. All right. We move forward to Mr. Colt.
You want to since to allow them to have all the same amount of time?
Sure. They all will have the four minutes.
Well, no, I'm saying go back to back to back, allow them to all speak during the public comments instead of, because we're going to roll through those to get to public comments pretty quickly instead of singling out each individual. So a proper time should have been during public comments.
I agree, but typically in the past, the way we've done it precedent wise, as we've invited folks out, but if you want to do it that way, we can do that.
I figure that since, yep, as you said.
Okay, that works. All right. So we move forward. All right. Our future meetings will include a Citizens Advisory Committee meeting Tuesday, July 19th, 2022 at 7:30 PM. That will occur here at the Town Office. The planning commission meeting, sorry, the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting will occur Tuesday, July 19th, 2022 at 7:30 PM here. The planning commission meeting will occur Monday, July 23rd, 2022 at 7:00 PM here at the Town Office. The Town Council meeting will occur Monday, August 1st, 2022 at 7:30 PM here at the Town Office, and that will also be available by Zoom. The planning commission 7:00 PM meeting as well. It's, is that correct?
July 25th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Turning to the minutes from our last meeting, has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes? Is there any modifications? We want to see enhancements or corrections?
I had none.
No, no, no. All right. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented then?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion?
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? The motion carries four to zero. Moving forward, we turn to our Sheriff's deputies for the police report. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. I'm Deputy First Class Bartholomew. I have here for the month at four days of holidays. Last annual leave used. So training. Both I and Deputy Ahal has some rescue task force training, the law enforcement center as all, as well as police one training. Some events include the Corpus Christi procession and the Community Heritage Days we assisted with. Total calls for service this month was 418, which includes three total arrests, 158 directed patrols, 122 traffic stops, and 210 win cards, which is what important, what's important now. That concludes what I have.
Terrific. Any questions for the Sheriff's Deputy?
I have a question. I didn't bring last month's report, so I don't know about the numbers, but last month Deputy Ahal reported to us that it appeared that crime was rising in town. So the numbers here in the report, is that holding about the same? Have you seen an uptick as he reported last month, or are we looking a little bit better right now?
So last month, based on questions that came out of that last month's Town Meeting, I emailed Ms. Willetts a snapshot of a 60-day period, April and May of 2021 versus April and May of this year.
Okay.
Because of that perception. In April and May of 2021, there was a total of 149 calls for service for that 60-day period in town.
Okay.
This year, in the same 60-day period, April and May, there were 144 calls for service. There were nine reportable incidents during the time period in 2021 versus 13 in 2022. There were three assaults reported in each time period, 2021, 2022, again for the 60-day snapshot. The biggest discrepancy was property crimes. So in 2021, we had one property crime reported in that 60-day period. But this year, we had six in that 60-day period, which we know was occurring at the construction sites, off hours, things of that nature. So in general, I would say the trends are essentially the same. There's no statistical difference now. I did explain to Ms. Willetts, that's a 60-day snapshot. I didn't do a full 12-month analysis, but I'm pretty confident that the numbers are about the same for a 12-month period.
Okay.
That, you know, there are ups and downs month to month. Some months will have virtually no property issues, no assaults, no big major, you know, crimes reported, and other months will have a little bit of a spike, but over a 12-month period, they balance out. So I have not seen anything in the data that I've looked at that says that the crime is trending up per se.
Okay.
I think it's just we had, you know, the construction sites got hit with thefts back to back to back, pretty much in that, you know, two-week span that kind of caught everybody's attention.
All right.
So, but we haven't had any other, you know, issues related to that since, knock on wood. We've been much more proactive with that, which is why you've seen the win cards and the directed patrol cards, you know, go up because these guys have been driving through the neighborhoods, making sure that they're being seen, especially at night.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir. Anything else?
Anything more for the deputies? Hearing none. Gentlemen, thank you. Really appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
Be safe. Okay, we turn from the police report to the Town Manager's Report. Ms. Willetts.
Good evening. This is the Town Manager's Report for May 2022. I highlight some of the areas related to streets outside of their normal tasks. They drilled some new holes and installed new concrete bases, street light on Zanella Drive. They mowed and we killed the curbs in the developments. Staff also put up the new memorial brackets and banners on East and West Main Street, as well as South Seaton Avenue. The contractor poured a section of the sidewalk in front of 320 and 333 East Main Street as part of a curb stop project. They also put up the US flags on streetlight poles on East and West Main Street and South Seaton in observance of Memorial Day and the Fourth of July. Related to parks, again, outside of their normal tasks, they installed a new faucet in Memorial, at the Memorial Park concession stand. Put ball field mix on ball fields number five and seven. They also repaired the men's entrance door to Memorial Park restroom building. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is still at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. Roughing filters are being back washed two times a day, and the DE filters are getting two-week runs. I listed the well, well levels for May. Water production, we produced 211,654 gallons per day on average, and we consumed an average of 229,721 gallons per day. The percent of backwash water in May is about 11.79%. We purchased 439,850 gallons of water from the mount in May. Related to wastewater, we treated an average of 955 gallons per day and consumed 229,721 gallons. About 76% of the wastewater treated this month was wild water. Would note that we received five inches of rain in three days. You'll see a dramatic decrease in the, in the wild water next month. Staff is working on a presentation related to wild water and the percentages and an explanation of them as well. We had one spill of untreated sewage in the month of May, and that was May 7th. About 104,000 gallons lost. Manhole 98 and 35 MDE and Frederick County Health Department were notified. We did receive the plants or did exceed the plant's design capacity. It actually should be three times in the month of May. May 6th, 7th, and 8th, and that was due to the significant rain. We currently, we received 7.95 inches of rain in May. The average is only 4.34. We currently, by the end of May, we had a deficit of .46 inches over the last six months. Trash pickup remains Mondays in the month of July. There are some, I listed some of the meetings I attended. Noteworthy items, staff replaced a four-inch cleanout at the fire museum. They installed a new bulb in the wall pack light and cleaned the rain, out the rain gutters at 303 West Lincoln, dug up and repaired some curb boxes, installed a new breakaway kit on, put number 84 fire hydrant back in service after it was struck. Rudders continues to install water and sewer lines. It should be about complete. Since LG Sonic was launched in early April, the lake quality has been pretty good. And then the well static levels continue to remain higher than historical data. The water quality remains constant. So at this point, it seems that the water table is up, which is good. And that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the Town Manager related to the? Yes, sir.
Ms. Willetts, Tom's Creek provides no water for the town, correct? We don't have anything flowing into us or anything like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so one effect, because I don't know if anybody saw the issues that were going on up in Fairfield with Tom's Creek from the salt from the mine, or whatever it's called up there, that's running into, it turned everything white. I didn't want anybody to be concerned
Right.
that that was coming into town and affecting anything that we're doing here.
No, it doesn't have any effect on ours.
Just wanted to clarify that because I know they're having major meetings up there and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments for the manager or questions? No, hearing none. All right, we move forward. We turn now to the Town Planner for his report.
Hello. Can I just make a note? We included in this month, since the board approved the part-time grant administrator position. Ms. Shaw, and I thought it was appropriate that we provided a report to the board monthly on the active grants, some newly awarded grants, as well as some pending grants and upcoming grants that she'd be applying for, and that's just for your knowledge. And she's available or I'm available at any time if you have questions related to any of the grants.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
It's good to see you truly. I wasn't going to open up the box, but you opened it, so I have one question that you might be able to answer. In a number of program open space grants, we are waiting on the decision of the Maryland Board of Public Works. Have we heard anything?
Which, which number are we looking at?
I'm looking at the newly awarded grants, and many of them are pending the decision of the Maryland Board of Public Works. And if Ms. Shaw could maybe post an email as to when that board will meet, so we hear back regarding the decisions, that would be good if that's possible.
Yep, we will.
Okay. Don't want to put anybody on the spot. I'm sorry. Okay. And that's it. So now we turn to the Planner's Report. If the manager is set?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am. All right. Thank you, everybody. This is the Planner's Report for May of this year. I'm also just going to highlight some key areas. Under Commissioners, a bunch of us met with a potential developer of the Fraley Farm on the second and the third to discuss a potential project. I researched areas for potential municipal parking lot, met with the Public Works Director, Commissioner Ritz, and Citizen at Community Park on the ninth regarding drainage issues and solutions. That should be settled hopefully in August. Processed zoning text amendment application. I processed the connection fee payment plan application and waiver request, updated the parking plan ordinance and policy based on Commissioner feedback. Met with Mayor and the Lindsays regarding annexation of the three-acre parcel and their parcel, I'm sorry, grants, community legacy. Process reimbursement requests. I started the fiscal year 23 grant application. ADA ramps reviewed and processed weeks 34 or 37 through 43 payrolls, obtained approvals to the state to use excess grant money and work with the engineer on more projects. I researched grants for a sidewalk connection along South Seaton Avenue from Cedar Avenue to the edge of the town's boundary. I'm sure you all received an email. I'm very proud to announce that I received a $121,400 Chesapeake Bay Trust Grant for the project over there on the big board. This is the Silo Hill Restoration Project that we're required to do for MS4 permit. That's on top of the $34,000 we received previously. So we received 155,400 towards $199,000 project. So we're proud of that. MS4 tree planting event held at the wastewater treatment plant on the seventh. Received MDE comments on previous year permit reports, started processing comments, code enforcement and permits. I processed six zoning permit applications, five backflow preventer permit applications, one no zoning permit required form, three street cut permits, three street closure permits, two personal firewood harvest permits for new parking enforcement permit software. I attended a virtual cloud and handheld training, device training on the fourth and the 10th with Amy. We attended a court hearing on the third, 11th, and 24th with the code enforcement officer regarding an East Main Street property. We attended, I attended a wealthy avenue property cleanup on the fourth. Thank you to deputies for being present on that one. Prepared documents for the East Main Street Court cases, continued issuing citations to East Main Street property for high grass and junk. Responded to various incident reports. Planning Commission, the 500 East Main Street right away plat, I processed and prepared the staff memo on that. Federal Stone, I issued one address for their new lot. I reviewed the corrected site landscape and lighting plans and prepared staff memo. And also reviewed it for the mayor and planning commission chair signatures. I processed six deeds of easements, which you're seeing tonight on your agenda. Irish Town Road, I processed the bond reduction request. That's on your agenda tonight as well. Attended a planning commission meeting. Miscellaneous, new town sign project management. I'm sure you all saw the Newtown sign out front. Finalized sustainable community designation renewal application prepared for the board meeting. I completed the 2021-22 Maryland Forestry Biennial Review Questionnaire. I attended a mandatory application training on the 17th for our renewal, and then there's the new business and development updates as usual.
Any questions for the Town Planner related to the Town Planner's Report? Mr. Ritz?
Two, Mr. Golden. One, any, since it's referenced in there, are there any updates on that annexation for that parcel in the Lindsays over near the wastewater treatment plant? The, go ahead.
We actually, I believe the mayor reached out to Mr. Lindsay last week to offer some suggestions and see where he is.
Okay.
And then once I think they come to some sort of agreement, then bring it to the board for approval.
Okay.
I don't know if the mayor heard back from Mr. Lindsay or not.
Okay, more vacation time and okay. And then the second question, there is a couple of references to East Main Street under code enforcement. I'm assuming that's one property that we spoke of previously. Correct. Okay.
Okay. Any more questions, Mr. Ritz?
Nope, I'm finished. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis? The Newtown sign up front, which looks very nice, by the way. What do we have to do in our ordinance so we can keep that thing on 24/7?
Oh, sure. We would have to eliminate the area that requires non-residential properties to have it turned off at 11:00 PM, then turn back on at 5:00 AM. So we would just have to adjust that section.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to see us look at that. It's seems kind of weird to spend $50,000 on a sign. I can only have it, you know.
Sure.
I think our ordinance needs to be looked at for that. That's all. Thanks.
Great, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Burns?
Quick question. Here, Mike. There you go.
You have Emma Ridge too listed as property sold to investor, correct?
Yes.
As of yesterday, it's listed again on for sale.
Really? Didn't know that. So that's very good news.
That's why I pulled it up right here. That's why it's been on Realtor for one day. So I'm just asking if you guys have heard anything about that.
No. RJD Development is looking to purchase it, so I'll let him know.
Okay.
I did see it. I have a Realtor, and I did see it come up, and I think it was purchased for 100,000. They're showing a plan that maybe, yeah, what was it purchased?
It was more than 100,000, but okay. I'm not sure.
It's on the market for 499, or 99,000, but they're showing a planned development that I'm not sure is, is anything originated with the owner.
Okay, didn't know that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the Planner, Mr. Burns?
Just came up.
Or kind of, oh, sure. Yeah, it was on Zillow at 499. They're looking to move forward, it looks like. Okay. One question, and it comes back to Duncan again.
Sure.
Got the tables. The tables look great. They have the umbrellas. They're being used. In the original site plan that we approved with the tentative approval piece, it was my understanding there was going to be concrete under them. Is that accurate?
No, it was always grass.
It was always grass.
And Joe can confirm that it was always.
Yes, Mr. President, during our planning commission meeting, actually, one of the planning members suggested that. And the rest of the planning commission liked that idea. We went, we went with that.
So the permeable surface concern, was that your rationale or?
I believe that was that individual's concern when he brought that up.
Yeah, okay. The only concern I have is that it, I don't know that it's ADA compliant for access, and that was the only thing that came to mind. Someone had mobility issues and used a chair, they wouldn't be able to access it because it's not a consistent surface for them.
I, okay, that, I can't speak.
No, 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 don't worry. I mean, I'm just saying that's where I'm coming from concern wise. So I love the permeable surface concept, truly, I do. And
That individual is not me, by the way, but.
But, so I don't mean to sound that way.
But no, we, it was pretty much consensus, if I remember correctly. Yeah, I think the, Mr. Patel preferred it to be grass. So. Oh, the applicant too. Okay. The applicant preferred, our engineer reviewed and said it was fine.
Okay. So compliance wise, we're okay for ADA access too?
Right. It's voluntary.
Okay, interesting. All right. I'm sure the property owner would, as it costs less, so.
Sure, sure.
All right, nevertheless, okay, well, I'm glad that's resolved. I'm intrigued by that. Okay. Any other questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Burns.
Mr. Golden, South Seaton Avenue, that's state highway, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, since the Fire Academy changed their entrances, I know there was that little cutout so people could get around, but now that they've changed their entrances, the cutout doesn't kind of work anymore. So I didn't know if there'd been any communication about possibly expanding that or anything of that nature.
No, it's all in the county's boundaries. They don't let us know.
All right. Anything else, Board? No, hearing none. All right. We now move on to Commissioner comments. Mr. Ritz?
I'll keep it brief. There are too many individuals and organizations to mention, so I just want to thank everyone who helped and participated in Community Heritage Day. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Mr. Davis? No, no, thanks. Well done. Mr. Burns?
I just want to say the Community Heritage Day was a great event. I also attended the groundbreaking for the new archives and improvements for the Basilica and Daughters of Charity. And they've done an unbelievable job bringing in close to $10 million as of that morning for the improvements and for everything that they're going to be planning on doing. It was a great event. They had, and close to 100 people show up. I met a guy from Texas who flew in just for that event. So it was a, it was a great event and really looking forward to what they're going to be able to do over there and the number of people then that will be coming into the community and town to visit that. And, and the various things around town will be a great, great for the town. Thanks.
Sure. Thank you, sir. My hat's off to staff for getting Community Park ready for, for Community Day. It was pristine. Everything was outstanding. I didn't hear anyone grouse about grounds or tall grass or whatnot or anything being unready. So that's much appreciated. The oh, there we go. I received a number of complaints related to parking in town recently, just as recently as this afternoon via an email. So there are concerns about that which relates to our upcoming agenda item. I did hear complaints from a resident related to the forthcoming paving in the Stonehurst Court of Phase One of Pembroke Woods. I did explain to that individual that the process is moving forward. So they've been advised of that. Moving from there, after Community Day, the mountain biking race that was sanctioned by United States of America Cycling was, I would say, a success as an event, although its attendance was small in its first year. They did advise me and have advised me again that they will be returning next year, which is a real feather in our cap, that an Olympic qualifier is in Emmitsburg's purview here. That also represents a lot of teamwork between the university, between the town, between the racing folks, and the visual and host company, Mr. Davis. Thank you for being there for the safety piece. That was appreciated very much by the race organizer. The winner of one of the collegiate categories was a university student, very impressive. And the winner of an earlier event, I'm told, was an actual former Olympian. So we drew a pretty heady crowd despite the fact that we're a small site. So with that in mind, I'll conclude my remarks and I'll go to the mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Vacation in the Southwest. Wonderful time down in New Mexico and took up most of my time. I really appreciate the different commissioners stepping in the, attend events for me and there. Congratulations to Heritage Day people and volunteers. It's always phenomenal success and speaks very highly of our community. I do have some remarks, but I was on vacation while they they were being prepared. I didn't get a man, so they'll be in the next meeting. Some of the meetings I attend attended, but again, thank you all. Take care.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Davis, you're a role model.
Quick and to the point.
That was succinct. Okay, very good. Always get the lightning on that one. Okay, we now turn to public comments, Mr. Burns. Okay, so with that in mind, we turn to the first individual signed up, Mr. Mason Carter, if you would please join us. I'll ask it when you come forward. You identify yourself. In the past, we would ask people who spoke at the podium to tell us their home address. We're not doing that anymore. We learned that in MML, that is not something we do. But if you wanted to volunteer it, we'd be happy to hear. The floor is yours, sir, for four minutes. There is, it's public, this public comment, so it's a four-minute limit. Okay, it is a four-minute limit.
Got it. All right. Well, thank you, guys, for having me here. Let me to speak. Specifically Commissioner Ritz, who reached out to me. It was nice to meet you all. I really came here to listen to you guys and not speak too much. Mine is Mason Carter. I'm running for Frederick County Council, District Five, which encompasses Emmitsburg. So a big part of my campaign was municipal support and coordination because I'm from Walkerville. And there has not been a lot of useful coordination between county and town, and that's why we see a lot of development problems in Walkerville. We see overcrowding on our roads, especially in our schools. We're also high school. It's 120% capacity, which is the worst of anything in the county. We're also high school. It's a hundred and twenty percent capacity, which is the worst of anything in the county. Uh, so I really would hate that to to creep up here to Emmitsburg because we see that from the southern part of the county, uh mostly from Montgomery County and up. Uh, there's been a lot of overdevelopment and I really wish that not to happen here in Emmitsburg. Uh, because it's kind of, you know, people live in Emmitsburg and Thermont for a reason. And so we wish to keep it that way, but I really look forward to working with all you guys and ensuring that um the county stays the way it does. Because I think that right now we have something good, but of course we have stuff to work on as well. But as I was a councilman, really hope to uh institute a constant yield to ensure that our families can stay here because I think too much. Uh, so our state and our county has priced out our residents. So we've seen lifelong residents have to leave the county and the state. Maybe we've got to create safer communities. I'm really glad that you have a deputy here uh today. Uh, thank you for your service, sir. Because we should really be handcuffing our criminals, not our police officers with these stringent regulations I've seen come down from the state. And now uh now in our county too, which I'm very um I'm very not pleased with. My my strong stance on uh public safety has enabled me to gain the support of the Frederick County career firefighters. So I look forward to working with our first responders. We need to slash on these these unnecessary regulations. I think this really uh hurts our farmers a lot. And of course of county Thermont, uh Emmitsburg, you have a lot of, we have a smart, pretty big farming community. And we gotta do what we can to support them. I spoke to a farmer and I was able to tour his farm uh in Thermont yesterday. And he spoke about these regulations. I've lost me a lot of money and a lot of land. He owned a fourteen acre farm on Mud College Road. And it was one, one regulation lost over a thousand dollars a year. And so we gotta do what we can as a county to really just leave our, leave our farmers alone because they they live up here to kind of be left alone away from excessive government. And my my phrase always is the government works best when it stays off our back and up our pocket. But I wish not to speak too long. I want to hear what you guys have to say because I look forward to working with you guys. And um really coordinating with you guys so that we don't turn our county into Montgomery County. Uh, so with that, I conclude my statements. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Return now to Colt Black. Yes, there's a, correct.
Okay, Commissioners, thank you very much for having me this evening. My name is Colt Black. I am a candidate for United States Congress, District Six, which of course encompasses all of Frederick County. I'd like to thank you guys as Commissioners and the mayor, especially Commissioner Reitz for reaching out to me uh to speak this evening. So as a federal candidate, you know, our biggest responsibility, should I be elected, is to stay the heck out of your way. There is so many federal regulations that we have right now from the planning and zoning emphasis and U S Department of Housing and and zoning uh all the way to the education. What we're doing with public safety right now and handcuffing our law enforcement. And thank you for your service, Deputy, for being here this evening. We we have a lot that we need to do on the federal level to keep ourselves out of, out of your way. Local government was always supposed to be the most powerful form of government. And I intend to bring local governance back through the use of the enumerated powers, Article One, Section Eight of the United States Constitution. And ensure that the federal government is not getting involved in state and local affairs. That is probably the biggest and most important thing that I, as a congressperson, can do for each and every one of you and your citizens here. I really appreciate the time. I look forward to working with each and every one of you and know shall I win this election, my door will always be open to each and every one of you. And I thank you very much for this time and opportunity for speaking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I invited this time Mr. Darrell Baughman. Am I saying that right? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Briggs, President O'Donnell, Commissioners. My name is Darrell Baughman. I'm running for county executive for Frederick County. For those who don't know me, this is not my first time in deciding to help serve this great county. I started my service on the Board of Education. Uh, in two thousand, I served from two thousand to two thousand and ten with two elections uh in the process. From there, I I I was also a business owner uh for fifteen years. I had a company that that designed and deployed converged wireless systems for the hospitality industry. So if you went into a hotel and couldn't use your cell phone before, after a small company in Frederick County developed the solution, you were able to use your cell phone in the hospitals and large hotels. During that time, I also served on the board for the Chamber of Commerce because I saw a need in expanding the the business opportunities in Frederick County. I currently serve on the board for Frederick Health Hospital. Healthcare is a big issue in our community. These positions are not positions that give people payment. These are positions where you get involved when you really want to make a difference. And I believe over the the term, the twenty-five years in Frederick County serving account, I've been here for thirty years. But the twenty-five years of serving our community, I believe I've made a difference. I actually also served on the board for Hartley House for battered women and abused children. Uh, I saw that as an important need as well. I am a community servant. My leadership style is a servant leadership style, even though I served in the U S Army. I was a captain in the army, so I I've learned true leadership. I learned sacrifice and dedication and hard work, and I learned commitment. So as a county executive, I see as an opportunity to take that next step to help our county to be better. And I agree with the fact that you all run pretty efficiently on your own. You don't require a lot of intervention. But there are things that you need as a community and you need to be able to speak with your county executive and communicate and have a partnership. Not a dictator, but a partnership that says, you know your community better than I do. What can I do to serve you? That's the servant style leadership. If we as I don't want to say politician because I'm not a politician. I'm a community servant. It just so happened that they they put that title on it. But if we learn to serve others as opposed to serving our self egos and our own power and our own money, if we tru- truly learn a meaning of service, we can be a better county. I want to serve you, 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 you and every citizen across this county. And how do you do that? First, you listen. You know more about this community than I will ever know, so I want to listen to you and I want to learn more about your community and then I can lead the county. But if I take it in the other approach, it's not going to work. We're not going to get along and the people are going to suffer as a result. The last thing I want to say is I want to focus on business. We're paying too much in personal property taxes. And people are saying, well, we want to reduce the taxes. Well, right now, the county depends on personal property taxes. Until you replace that with some other income, you can't do that because you're going to struggle in other areas. I want to bring viable businesses into the county. What would that do? It'll provide better jobs. You want to talk about affordable housing? There's two ways to make make houses affordable. You can bring down the price of housing and you can bring up the salaries of your citizens. So that's the approach I want to take. And it can be done. It's been done in many other places without having to overcrowd our community by building a bunch of houses. There are some houses necessary, but if we focus on developing the businesses, then the right houses and communities will be built around it and we can thrive as a community, as a county. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your service.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I am, the next folks signed up are agenda specific, so we'll move on. Okay, great, thank you all. All right, so. Yes, sir, Mr. Uh, Mr. Davis. I'd like to to thank all the the candidates for taking the time to come to Emmitsburg. We're uh forgotten about a lot. And it it means a lot to me to to have you here. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
All right, I am the weak link here. Here we go. Sorry. We move now to administrative business. We're looking forward to a presentation now from Mount St. Mary's staff regarding a Mount St. Mary's freshman event in the Eugene Myers Park on August twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Wendy Bree Baker. I've had the pleasure of meeting several of you, so thank you for this time to share. And thank you to all of you who are with us today. So greetings from Mount St. Mary's University. My name is Wendy Bree Baker. I'm the new Director of Orientation and New Student Services. So we are about to welcome about a little over five hundred students in just a few short weeks. And today with me, I have also our Vice President, Dr. Levi Esses, who's here as well to share any comments or thoughts or answer questions. We have a brand new event that we are bringing to the park. We met with the manager of your park here, the Eugene Myers Community Park. And we wanted to bring an event that would help to bring together the community and our students that we have on August twentieth from five to eight in the evening. So as I mentioned, we have five hundred plus students that are coming in. They're local within about an hour and a half drive or so radius of here. We have national students from all over. I just spoke to somebody from Colorado yesterday. Uh, we have international students. I was just working with a student from Mexico. Uh, we also have commuters that are coming from all over. And before coming to the mount, I was at Hack, a community college in Pennsylvania. We have several commuters coming from that institution. And also Frederick's Community College as well. The goal of this event is to connect our students with the community of Emmitsburg and Thermont so that they understand what services are available to them, but also what worship or volunteer opportunities are available. We want them to understand what park amenities are so close to them, two point three miles from our door to here. And also, all freshmen are permitted to bring their cars. What service opportunities do they have if their car breaks down? We also recognize that there are going to be part-time job opportunities that they may want to utilize in order to help them with tuition or books or any of their daily needs. And we also have students with accommodations that do have pets that are with them, service animals, so they will need some type of pet care. So we're hoping on this day, we've already worked with Frederick County Public Schools and we are chartering public school buses to come here. And it's nice because it, the turnaround is right there, literally side by side with the park. They will be dropping off right there at the elementary school behind this building. And we will have a community fair that will run from five to six thirty. We're asking community members to set up starting at four P M. This is businesses, worship centers, community organizations such as the fire department or others that would like to table and share with our students what they have to offer. And maybe have them sign up if they want to be a on the um with the fire department or some other organization. We also recognize that we want to have as many organizations as possible. But we do ask that everyone sign up ahead of time so we have enough space. There is a registration flyer and a Q R code, so you can scan, but I also do have flyers with me as well if you want additional ones. There were emails sent out to all businesses last week, so thank you to the town planner who helped with that and also Thermont is doing the same. But we'd be happy to provide flyers if you need them, but our student coordinators for orientation will be going door to door to the businesses this coming Wednesday and Thursday. They'll be going to the different ones to make sure that they've gotten one. So we do want them to come and share what they have. Students will be given a passport to go around and visit us, you know, as many as they possibly can to be entered into win prizes after they have visited so many in uh groups that are going to be there. Some of the other things that we're going to be sharing, our campus recreation department is going to be utilizing some of the fields and some of the different spaces on the park's property. So we're looking at things like kickball and frisbee golf on your courses that you have and trying to do three on three basketball or free throw contests and more. So making sure that we are providing a variety of opportunities for different ability levels and making sure that students feel connected and having fun in a variety of ways. Also, including our campus ministry is going to use a smaller space that you have in order to have small, more intimate type styles of games like cornhole and can jam and bocce and things like that. And just getting to have conversations with the students as well. We are going to be utilizing the pool and we thank you for your assistance in being able to do so. And um we will have uh tickets to go in that we will be charged per ticket for the students that do come into the pool that evening. We will also, we've been working to get additional porta potties on the facility grounds that we do have some that are already here, but we will be having additional ones supplied as well. We have already discussed with our Director of Public Safety in order to make the safest environment for all that are there. So our Director of Public Safety has been working with law enforcement to discuss with them, what do we need put in place? And we also are anticipating bringing the small gas powered vehicles so that we can monitor things like the back trail that you have that goes through the woods back behind one of the fields. And we also have been discussing with possibly Frederick County Public Schools if there is an emergency, whether or otherwise that we could possibly use the elementary school in order to shelter into place if it's a necessity. We also have the rain location as our arc building that we will have some opportunities for there and then we will pull in the community fair to that space. So regardless of weather, we will still have the community fair component. We will also be using the Move app. It's a map, an app that was created by a Mount, two Mount St. Mary's students that we will be advertising the event to our students, but we will also check them on and off the bus. So we make sure we have all students as they come back and forth. And then we will have staff and faculty on site as well, but they will be encouraged to take the bus as much as possible to limit the uh case where there could be any type of overflow parking issues and whatsoever. We want to leave that for any of our businesses or community members that are coming in order to table during that event. So this includes the presentation that I have, but I'm open to any questions that you might have and also Dr. Esses is here as well and I do have flyers.
Any questions related to the presentation, Mr. Davis? No, I just think it's a great event and my daughter went to McDaniel. McDaniel, uh, they had a similar event that it was, it was open for for everyone and it's uh it was very well attended. It was goo- good for the communities.
Excellent to hear. Thank you.
Commissioner Ritz?
Actually, my question's more directed to town staff. Are we, have we started um advertising the um the pool closure that day?
No, we haven't. I wanted, was waiting till the board heard her presentation. Um, and you see, I made some notes in there. I did have the wrong time. I had five to seven. Um, it's five to eight. And some of the things that the town's going to do, and I think the porta potts, uh, the town's going to go ahead and and take care of those at at the town's expense. And then we're going to close the pool. Essentially, it's called a private event from four thirty, beginning at four thirty till seven. We'll start getting the word out now. Um, then they've requested to close the road in the park. And um I just need a time that the road needs to be closed and we'll start promoting that too. Any, I don't know if there's any ball field reservations for that time, but I I believe they've already sent emails out to all the organizations to let them know that the fields won't be available um at that time.
Mr. Burns, any questions? Um, Mr. Mayor? What will the ratio be faculty to students present? Like, what's your plan for that in order to manage? Because I know that, number one, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a wonderful idea, but I also know that, you know, being a logical occasional environment, the young people will need supervision, especially on their first, maybe first outing. So do you have a ratio in mind for staff to students?
That's a really good question. So we have orientation leaders that are trained for this event, so each orientation leader will be assigned to their orientation group. Orientation groups do not exceed eighteen, but we will, that is our student leaders. There will also be all student life staff that is on duty. This is a all-in event. Everyone will be there. As far as quantity, can you speak Levi to any ratio quantity that we might have?
Mr. President, I think we'll have at least probably twenty to thirty staff out there just from student life and and other areas. And we'll also have some faculty that live in town that'll probably help us out as well.
Well, the RAs will probably be there as well from all the.
They will, correct. Um, RAs, the the Activities Management Program, the AMP Group, and then Orientation Leaders will also be there.
That's probably another thirty or forty.
I I would venture to say we have at least sixty student leaders that are upperclassmen.
The only other concern, if anybody was concerned about the pool, is Frederick County schools actually go back on the seventeenth. So you might not see as many people on the weekends and stuff like that with school starting early and everything.
I I was, that's a good point. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we had enough advertising out there that, hey, hey, guys.
So the pool has a max capacity between the pool and the splash garden. Amy can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it's three hundred and fifty max capacity. Um, I don't foresee that being a problem. I don't see three hundred and fifty students going to the pool at the same time. We have requested an additional lifeguard from the pool company. They have not gotten back to us if they have anybody available. They, as everybody else is having staffing issues. Um, and then I also invited the deputy to be here if you had any specific questions for him related to the event also.
Sure, okay. Um, deputies, I'll ask. Do you have any specific concerns related to the event that you might want to bring forward that?
No, sir, I don't. Any, any concerns have been addressed. Uh, the town deputies will be on duty that day. We'll also have additional support from from patrol. We're not going to be in the park per se, but we'll be in the town. Just being visible, doing what we do, making sure, you know, that we can be helpful in any way that we're asked to be.
Great, okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. We have a pickleball court overlay on the, if anybody, if you have the equipment that they're on the tennis court.
I'll be sure to tell that to Campus Rec. Thank you. They were going to come over and take a look themselves too.
Pop there somewhere.
Just one last comment. I believe we have an onsite meeting, myself and Mount staff and Jimmy Click. And I did invite you if you're, if you want to come. I believe it's August third.
Uh, that sounds correct.
So we'll do an onsite meeting then and go over just fine-tune the rest of the details.
Great. Okay. Would you like a consensus from the board, just so you have some verbal acknowledgement that, to move forward regarding advertising? Are you okay?
That's no, you can do that. Be great. It'd be great to have your.
Okay, all right, very good. So consensus, do we offer consensus with this item?
Okay.
Great.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. unanimous consensus with Mr. Sweeney absent.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
All right. At this time, we now turn to our consent agenda item. First item is the appointment of Kevin Hagan as a regular member of the Planning Commission with term of July eleventh, twenty twenty-two through July eleventh, twenty twenty-seven for consideration. Stephanie, any addition? Okay, all right. With that in mind, is there a motion to accept Mr. Hagan for this position?
So good.
Is there a second for Mr. Davis's motion? Motion is made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Burns as its consent agenda item. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody against? Motion carries four to zero. All right. Congratulations, sir, Mr. Hagan. Thank you for participating. And do we have an alternate, alternate member at this time?
No, we are still looking at volunteers. We'll put it back on for August and hope for the best.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Now turn to the treasurer for the treasures report, Mr. Burns.
This is the treasurer's report for July eleventh, twenty twenty-two. This is the cash activity as of June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. We had a cash balance on June first of seven million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two deposits in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-three withdrawals in the amount of four hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and twenty with an operating balance going forward of seven million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five. The top ten check amounts are listed below, and as you can see next to several of them, they are all reimbursed with grants as well.
Great. Thank you, sir. Any questions for the treasurer or staff at this time? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. We move on. Okay. We turn to the planning commission report.
Planning Commission meeting that was scheduled on June twenty-seventh was canceled due to the withdrawal of the application by the applicant. That's actually related to our agenda item number one this evening that was removed. Same, same deal there. The status of that application is to be determined. Our next meeting is July twenty-fifth for items not related to this, but we have a pretty, pretty heavy schedule that evening. I'll just leave it at that. If any other questions, let me know.
Any questions for Commissioner Ritz related to his report? Hearing none, we move on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we now turn to our regular agenda items. We move beyond agenda item number one as it has been with, the application has been withdrawn. So we now turn to agenda item number two. I'm on page twenty-five of one eighteen. Review and approval of the Saint Joseph College and Emmitsburg High School Wayside Exhibits for consideration.
I will turn this over to Michelle.
These are also up on the website under the agenda, under latest news and next town agenda, if anybody wanted to see them.
Good evening. My name is Madeline Shaw, and I am the grants administrator for the town. And I am presenting agenda, agenda item number two, which is the review and approval of the Saint Joseph College Wayside Exhibit and the Emmitsburg High School Exhibit. These two exhibits are part of a long-term historic walking tour the town is doing to date. Well, with the approval of these and installation, we will have fourteen total exhibits in town. The Emmitsburg High School Exhibit would be exhibit number thirteen, and the Saint Joseph's College Exhibit would be number fourteen. The Emmitsburg High Exhibit, I'll review that one first, will be placed in front of the Emmitsburg Community Center, just out front near the glass etching. And that is because this building used to be Emmitsburg High School. And so that exhibit is focused on the historical information with that. The contractors, contractors that we hired for this project worked with Joycey Brettchi. I wouldn't have butchered the name. She was a former student teacher and Emmitsburg alumni. So she's with the Emmitsburg Alumni Association. And she was involved in the development of the exhibit and reviewed the final draft of it, and she approved and said it looked okay to her. The sign would be installed in September, and there is a tentative ceremony for the hundred-year anniversary since its founding of the high school in September, probably on September seventeenth. So we're hoping to have the exhibit installed by then. And then the Saint Joseph's College Exhibit will be placed on the sidewalk outside of the National Emergency Training Center. The intent with that one is to draw students in as they're walking from the campus into town. And the historical significance of the Saint Joseph's College is it was a all-women's school in Emmitsburg from eighteen oh nine to nineteen seventy-three, when women, a bachelorette degree for women was uncommon and an extraordinary event. So we wanted to highlight that history. And the, our contractors worked with Scott Kiefer. He's an archivist with the Daughters of Charity, and he reviewed the material for accuracy. And he also approved the content of the exhibit, and he provided us with the images. Are there any questions?
I'll throw in one thing, and you know it's coming. Okay, I'm looking at the Emmitsburg High School item under the left-hand side of the page, nineteen twenty-eight school curriculum. Latin capital L. It's consistent with English and French. So one thing I'll throw out is the Emmitsburg Library itself downstairs is preparing a display also related to the high school. I know it can't be part of this directly, but they are also looking for photographs of anyone, from anyone who had attended the school. And any photographs more modern from the town, if they're available, related to any activities, which would include the tree lighting. So if we have any modern photographs of people attending or the visual and hose company there or any related folks, they would very be, they would be very grateful. They've shared that they'd love to have access to those photos if they could be made available for the displays.
If, if they could email myself or Michelle. A lot of our pictures are on the I drive, and they used to be up on the website, but since we migrated, I don't think they are anymore. Because we do have at least access to modern day, and I believe Amy gave them some stuff as well already.
Great. Okay. All right. Any other comments, questions, enhancements related to the wayside items, Mr. Ritz?
This is just one question. I, I do apologize. I guess it's starting to get a little smaller here, just in my mid forties. It's already starting, but the girls' basketball team, that little block at the bottom right-hand corner, does that list the team, the team, the students' names? It's real easy to see on the boys' team, but the girls', I'm assuming their names of students on the team.
Yes, it does.
Okay. That's good, just for consistency's sake. I just, thank you.
Fun fact from that one, Mr. Ritz, did you know back in the day it was six on six, not five on five for women's basketball? Yeah, up until early seventies.
I didn't know that. Thanks for the history lesson.
True, yeah. History. Hey, that history major that, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Share.
That we use.
That we use so often.
Yeah.
There we go.
Two steps, two steps to the past, right?
Okay, so with that in mind, is there a motion to accept the two wayside signs as modified?
So moved.
Is there a second for that motion? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero with Mr. Sweeney absent. We now turn to agenda item number three.
Miss, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle. Again, it's a pleasure dealing with, working with you on these wayside exhibits over the years. Thank you.
Okay, so agenda number three, approval of resolution twenty twenty-two dash three zero R bond reduction request for the Irish Town Road Project for consideration. Return to staff. I'm on page twenty-eight of one eighteen.
All right. Thank you very much. And just as you stated, it's a simple bond reduction request for the Irish Town Road Projects, Brookfield Lots, one through nineteen. As you can see from the, the road, a lot of the homes are already completed. The vast majority of public improvements are completed, so they are requesting a reduction in order to get a reduction in their bond. So we'll still hold one hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and ten cents, which will be released at a later date when they repave the second top coat of pavement, and also all the sidewalks are completed. And odds and ends, street signs and things like that. So that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for staff related to this item? Mr. Burns?
Do you see anything coming up that could affect the need for that bond, the, the higher amount or anything like that, or?
No, no, definitely not.
Mr. Mayor? Are you on board with this?
Yes.
Yes, very good. Okay, so is there a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Mr. Burns's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Commissioner Sweeney absent. We now turn to agenda item number three. Sorry, agenda item number four. I forgot. We skipped our number one. Approval of policy P twenty-two zero-two, update to parking fees and fines for consideration. Return to staff.
Sure. So if you could please go to page thirty-four of the agenda packet. We just wanted to highlight the proposed five-year parking plan and the changes that staff made with the mayor's consent since the May second meeting. So I'll go over this briefly. There weren't a lot of changes. Most were due to cost increases. So from July first, two thousand twenty-two to June thirty, two thousand twenty-three, the only change we did here is we added, we're, we're looking to work with an engineer to create a parking concept plan for one oh one South Seton Avenue, and we have this valued at two thousand dollars. Dr. Brim Gardner at one oh one South Seton Avenue has expressed interest in potentially selling the property. So it's a, in our opinion, it's a perfect location for a parking lot. It's only one block away from the square. So we're, we're thinking that probably between fifty to sixty parking spaces can go there. So we are working with an engineer in order to do a, a quick concept plan to see what will work there, what won't work there, and we're going to bring that back to you at a later date. From July first, two thousand twenty-three to June thirty, two thousand twenty-four, I increased the second bullet point there. It was sixty-six thousand dollars. We increased it to seventy-five thousand. This now includes new parking poles and also parking bases. I added a purchase at the board's request at our last May second meeting. We added the purchase twenty-nine digital meters and poles to finalize, finalize West Main Street enforcement area. This is Patterson Avenue to the Doughboy. There's fifteen poles on the north side and fourteen on the south side. Sixteen thousand dollars estimated cost plus the installation. This was at the request of Public Works Staff and the Commissioners. Also, on the last bullet point, apply for Maryland D H C D Strategic Demolition Grant Funds in order to purchase a property for a municipal parking lot. I did some research and found that this would be eligible for that grant. So we could purchase the property with that grant, and we can also demo and get the site ready with that grant as well. So that would save the town a significant cost. June, or excuse me, July first, two thousand twenty-four to June thirty, two thousand twenty-five, the only thing, second bullet point, I changed the amount from eighteen thousand, which was at the last meeting, to nineteen thousand, seven fifty. This is the installed thirty-two digital meters at the community pool parking lot. The increase is due to new poles and new bases. Also, at the end, total estimated cost up from one hundred and fifty-three thousand, three forty-eight to one hundred and seventy-two, eight seventy-six. Doesn't include installation costs or cost for the new municipal parking lot other than the estimated engineering. Are there any questions on the, the parking plan itself before we get into the policy? Sure.
The seventeen poles, the community pool parking, and I believe we spoke about this last time, but time-wise, what were we looking, or is it going to be same as when the pools open? Are we going to enforce during pool hours?
No, definitely not. We have it in the ordinance, and I can direct you to that page here. All right, here we go. So in the page forty-two of the ordinance, it says designation of zones. We put, and the community pool parking lot, the community pool parking lot shall be restricted to pool patrons from May fifteenth through September fifteenth from twelve P M to seven P M, which is parentheses, pool season. Parking for pool patrons during pool season shall be free. And we'll make sure we have plenty of signage, stickers on the meters, everything to, you know, do not pay the meter during this designated time. And enforcement would not be done during that time.
Mr. Burns, that.
Yep.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions for staff, Mr. Ritz? Yes, sir.
I know we asked this before, but I just, for clarification's sake, we're looking at getting new meters. Why? Sure. The old meters are extremely fragile, first off, and they're outdated. So the parts are no longer existent. The person who we mail the meters to to fix stated they can no longer be fixed. There. Do we look for a second opinion? We tried. We tried. Everybody says you have to get new meters. They're extremely outdated.
As a rit, we're going to make a small fortune selling them as antiques.
What are we doing with the old meters if we get new ones? We don't, we haven't discussed it yet. Probably. We don't, we don't know that, Mr. President.
Antique small man.
I'm going to buy them and put them on my children's door.
Yeah, that's, that we don't have a plan for the old ones yet. We're not at that stage. As you know, this is the five-year plan, and it's all tentative based off of funding that we can get, costs, supply. Obviously, we're looking at a lot of different options for the parking meters.
I'm not saying I doubt anybody. You know, I know you did your due diligence, but do you, do you have that information, like? Did they give you some sort of report or just?
As far as.
Phone call, like, no, we can't do it anymore. Yeah, Amy has, she's been working with this guy for the past eighteen years. Okay. And he stated that he does not have the parts anymore.
I believe there's some email documentation, if that's what you're asking.
I was just, yeah, just curious. Because I know that was part of the charm too. I remember we brought this up, but I don't know, maybe goodness, it was right after I was first came on, so maybe twenty fifteen. I remember we were looking at that before, Mr. President. And I know the, the board at that time was like, you know, that's part of the charm of town was the, our, our old meters.
So Mr. Ritz, a question.
They, they, they look the same, pretty much. It's the same style of parking meter. They're just modernized with the digital component. I think what you're thinking about is we were talking about the pay, pay-to-park machines and getting rid of parking meters altogether. I know that discussion came up a while back also.
Maybe that's what it was.
It could be.
And it's, it's interesting, you know, my generation, younger generations, they don't know to turn that knob. So Amy, when she does her daily walks, she'll actually turn the knob before she issues a ticket to make sure there's not a quarter or a dime in there. Gotcha.
So Mr. Ritz, just to seek clarity on one piece. When the town, if and when the town does move forward on replacing the parking meters that are there currently, do you want to be advised? Do you want the board to be advised what the plan is regarding how it will be managed from that point on?
You mean disposal of the antiquated meters?
I don't like disposal. I like up-selling.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think honestly, there's a market for those ridiculous.
I'd be very interested. Yeah.
Okay, so, all right. So is that something you would like to see? Like the, the feedback from staff related to what's going to happen to those?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. I do have one more question now. Dwelling on this, but I'm assuming because these new meters are digital, how is it easier to?
is it easier to keep them calibrated?
Very easy, yeah, it's so much easier. Calibration now is us putting in a huge packet, spending about fifty dollars of shipping, going to our company that fixes our, currently fixes the meters and them shipping it back.
Yeah.
Us now, moving forward, it's going to be Amy going into a system and typing it in.
Because we, I know we, we did receive some email correspondence today, there was some concern that, you know, with dropping a quarter and at the same time, you know, one meter might read fifty minutes, next one, the timer might go off, it's not a full hour, like, it might be fifty, there might be fifty five. I know that was just one email from one individual today, I'm pretty confident that's probably accurate, there, there's no way, I don't think everything's going to be exactly sixty minutes.
Talking with Amy today, which I've learned is they actually are cali- calibrated for one hour, five minutes. So we'd have to check out the meter.
Like a plus minus five?
No, a plus five. So if we could get, I didn't know the numbers of the meters, so if we could get those numbers to make sure that they are working correctly. We weren't given that information, so.
Well, I'll fess up, I was a guy that was bored this morning at six o'clock, and I found two other volunteers at the firehouse, I gave them each four quarters and we went and hit the six meters across the street from the firehouse. And we had meters going off at fifty minutes, we had meters going off at fifty five minutes, I think we did have one that did actually give you an hour. So I'm the guy. I was bored.
Go out and check those tomorrow.
So you say directly in front of the fire company?
No, across the street.
Everything in the first block of West Main.
First block of West Main, okay.
From, I guess, the square. In front of the VFW two, well, not the VFW, not the three spots there, but the first block from, say, the Palms to the, to the alley.
And that's one of the issues, you know, that we're kind of coming across is when something happens like that, when the meter starts to dysfunction, we're having problems of him being able to find the parts to fix the malfunction.
Oh, I agree, I agree with the replacement of the meters, but there's a we'll talk about this probably later.
I'm, I'm finished, I just.
And to follow up to your point, meters are reselling on eBay right now from a hundred to two hundred and twenty five per meter.
That's great.
And no, it's not going to the bike trails. I was seeing a donation of the vision.
Hidden agenda there, Mr. President.
Make a footnote, I make a footnote where I'm pointing now, okay, so, Mr. Mayor.
The request for additional polls on West Main Street from Patterson to Doughboy out there, where did that come from, okay, Commissioners?
That came from the Commissioners at our last meeting.
Yes, that's something Mr. Sweeney's been advocating for, for a very long time.
Very good.
Any, any other questions from the board?
Well, to follow up with that, Commissioner Sweeney, especially since it's your side of town, would you ever consider parking meters along North Seton?
Sweeney?
Yes, or I'm sorry, Mr. Ritz.
Commissioner Sweeney lives on.
Yes, both of you.
So you're doing a Clint Eastwood here.
My fault.
So you're looking at parking meters?
I'm just asking, because I know, obviously, if we're extending west down Main Street, would we ever consider, since we have all those parking spots on the north side of town as well?
Well, that's a good point, Mr. Burns, however, keep in mind too that the Green Street
Is gonna eliminate those.
Proves, and there'll only be limited parking, or with several of those parking spots. Would I, do I like the idea of the meters out there?
Just throwing it out there for you.
It's not a commercial district, so you don't face the same need for turnover.
I, I would agree with that, and I think the fact that a lot of the parking is going, you know, there's only, I can't remember off the top of my head, Mr. Golden, how many spots, but on North Seton Avenue.
I think it was gonna be fifteen.
Yeah, probably between fifteen and twenty.
Okay.
But it's really tight in a lot of areas, and people park up on the hill and everything else.
I don't know if that's a good idea.
Just throwing it out there.
I think it's a great idea, I'd love to park my car in front of your house. With my permit.
That's, that's public parking, though, you can park in front of my house all you want.
So, before we go to the vote, I, I will ask two items, why are we not considering the central items, just curiously, like the single box versus, or like eight boxes versus we, new parking meters?
We just wanted to bring this to your attention of what the mayor and our thought process are.
Okay, I got you.
The process going for, we wanted to provide that first, just kind of as a backup for the next two items.
It's a fluid plan.
Yeah, okay, all right, dynamic plan. Second item is, I would very much like to see added to the budget for this signage to identify where our parking areas are, if we're going to be using property and converting it to public parking, or we're gonna, I know we have something for the pool lot, I thought we did, but again, something a little bit more uniform for the entirety.
Yeah, I thought it would be important to put it on all four areas, north, south, west and east.
Okay, so.
Coming into town, yeah.
I think we should add to the budget for that, okay, so we don't need any vote for this item, then we're not gonna, okay, very.
We just wanted to highlight the importance of the next items.
I just got.
Mr. Davis, yes, sir.
I'm, I'm not real excited about losing the, the property at the dentist office, because that means we lose our dentist. And I think having a dentist in Emmitsburg is very, very important, so I, I would hope maybe we could help Dr. Brim Gardner sell his property to a dentist, because there is nobody else.
I spoke with Dr. Brim Gardner, and he is actually considering moving out the Seton Square. So he's not a hundred percent retiring yet.
Really?
So I'm working with him to try to find other alternatives, because he's wanting to get out of that location.
And we, we actually do have another dentist in town, Commissioner Davis, but I think he's, his building's for sale, so that's not a guarantee that he's staying.
As long as we're, there's a plan there, because we, we need a dentist in town.
Would, would the town ever advertise for something like that and say, hey, our town is looking for like, go to one of the dental schools or something like that and say, hey, for a recent graduate or something like that, just I don't know if that has ever come up in MML or anything of that, in that nature.
There are programs that you, well, a municipality could provide funding for scholarship purposes and bind someone to whatever their medical practice is to a set period of time. And that's how, that's one means of doing it, I was aware there was grant funding, I can't remember whether it was public or private at the time, but I know we're looking at some of our physicians aging out, and I think some of our pieces relate to the new dock in a box facility at the university, so I know this, I've been, I've been chasing that down peripherally, but there's money.
Working in, in the medical field, when we go to a lot of these conferences, a lot of places will have set up like different locations, like, hey, you should come here and work, or hey, you should come here and work. I didn't know if, like, when we go to the MML meetings, or if there is anything that a representative from the town can go to a dentistry conference, because there are the residents and the fellows that are coming out looking for jobs and, you know, sell the town and say, hey, look, you know, you would be the dentist in town, that kind of situation.
To me, it sounds it's more appropriate for the new EBPA to work towards. As they continue to develop, from what I understand, it's going to be under new leadership and moving forward. I think that would be a perfect opportunity for them to work for something the town needs.
Sure.
They probably would have better success than, than staff would.
Okay, so with that in mind, any more thoughts related to agenda, and sorry, agenda item number four, before we move to agenda item number five?
We're still on four, that was just the preliminary. Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. President, so we did some, what I did from the last meeting is I highlighted in my notes here, changes since May second meeting, also, I want to preface, so we, we issued three hundred and fifty nine tickets in a two month period, so this is May tenth, two thousand twenty two, to July tenth, two thousand twenty two. So I'm gonna kind of hi- highlight the percentages of tickets given in each of these areas, just for FYI. So for overtime parking, at the request of Commissioner Davis at our last meeting, it seemed like consensus wasn't there for the twenty five and forty, so increasing it from ten to twenty five and twenty five to forty, so we, we decreased that to fifteen dollars and thirty dollars after twenty days. And that's seventy six percent of our tickets that we do give, is overtime parking on Main Street. So unrestricted parking zone, nothing's changed there, that's eight percent of the tickets that we give. Parked in a crosswalk, in or by a crosswalk, that was zero percent. Parked on a sidewalk or curb, three percent of the tickets in the last two months. Parked blocking a driveway, less than one percent in past two months, parked by a fire hydrant, less than one percent. Parked blocking street at the consensus, it seemed like consensus was that it seemed a little low, so we increased that from forty to fifty for the fine, and then fifty five to sixty five after six, after twenty days. Failure to park between the lines, two percent within the past sixty days. Left side parking, three percent, past sixty days, snow burn, sea route, obviously, zero percent. This was increased at the consensus at the last meeting that it was low. We increased it from forty to fifty for the fine, and from fifty five to sixty five. Keep in mind that this is a significant problem that the public works staff has during the winter months. Parked for forty eight consecutive hours, let, four percent. Parked in handicap space, one percent, and non-electric vehicle, EV, parked in EV only space, zero percent. And I, our new system's awesome, because it breaks it down even further, so of those tickets, sixty percent were to Marylanders. Forty percent were to other states. Only less than ten percent, it's about nine point something percent, was Emmitsburg residents. So over ninety percent were to out of towners. And then when we break that down even further, our tickets were fifty one percent of the tickets were issued on West Main Street. Thirty one percent was issued on East Main Street, so that's eighty two percent of our tickets that we do give is on Main Street. Three percent's other, so those are the, the back alleys, two percent is in Brookfield, one percent, DePaul Street, one percent, North Gate, one percent, North Seton Avenue, one percent, Silent Hill, and then less than one percent for the following, Patterson Avenue, Federal Avenue, and South Gate. Go to your, you have any questions on those in particular, you for me, keep moving on. Okay, cool, for B, page thirty six of your agenda packet. We looked at the dates and it made more sense to, since we cannot repair any of the meters that we have currently. We moved the, the dates to correspond with the parking plan. So it's from present, we changed it to twelve thirty one, two thousand twenty two. So that will be the remaining rates, the rates will stay the same if passed tonight till January first. January first, two thousand twenty three to December thirty first, two thousand twenty four, that was changed to July first, two thousand twenty three to June, or excuse me, that was changed from those dates, I apologize, rates all stayed the same. The third bullet there, seven, one, twenty three to six, thirty, twenty five, we changed that to one, one, twenty five to twelve, thirty one, twenty six. And then lastly, it was July first, two thousand twenty six, we changed it to January first, two thousand twenty seven, indefinitely, so again, nothing's changed with the amount, we're recommending a gradual increase every two years in our rates for the daily parking bags and also for the parking meter reads, parking meter fees. As you can see, first on C, we removed the dimes from the fees per the board's request at our last meeting. None of the rates have changed, gradually increasing, the dates changed as noted as above, just to correspond with the parking plan. Other than that, Mr. President, nothing else has changed in the, the fees resolution.
Okay, so looking at part B and the fee schedules, any questions, concerns, comments? Mr. Davis?
I took the time to take copies of the new ordinance to all the businesses on Main Street that this would affect. And I've got, I got seven replies, and the businesses aren't real happy with this. For, for several reasons. You know, it's hard enough to get people downtown to start with, but then to to up the fees. That's, that's not helping, a lot of our businesses, they're, they're paying the parking tickets of their customers, that's getting very expensive. And that brings us back to the, to the reason of checking the meters this morning to see if we were getting true readings, and, and we're not. So I'm not real sure we should do anything until we get new meters and can, can make sure that we're being fair to people. Just seems like there's a lot of coincidence that, that people are getting tickets within three to five minutes from the time their meter pops up, and the business, businesses aren't happy with that.
This is, this is something that I brought up during our, our budget meeting. I went back and looked at our parking tickets that we, the fees that we brought in. And I know there was a decrease significantly because of COVID in twenty twenty, so I did go back. Well, I could go back to twenty fourteen, but I was missing some agenda packets, so I didn't want to go back that far anyway, so I thought, you know, what, five years was a good point, so I started calendar year twenty seventeen. Went through January to December. And for my, for, they're on the website, where I got the information from to make sure I didn't want to make sure I was missing any of my agenda packets, because they're all, they're all, they're all there, so in twenty seventeen, we, we brought in five thousand, one hundred and forty dollars in, in tickets. Twenty eighteen, five thousand, two hundred and five, just a sixty five dollar increase, seemed, seemed reasonable to me. Twenty nineteen went down slightly, again, this is pre-COVID, though, four thousand, seven hundred and fifty five. We'll skip over twenty twenty, the COVID year, twenty twenty one, probably the first part of it wasn't as much due to COVID, but then things started picking back up again, four thousand, four hundred and sixty. And then in twenty twenty two, the first five months just through May, we're at seven thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars in ticket revenue. Significant increase, which is, is more than, you know, those annual amounts before COVID, so I, I guess my question is, I know we were looking at COVID as a possibility that things, things were low, now they're going to be back up again. But the numbers now are much higher than they were before COVID, and so I was just curious as to why.
So, yeah, you are correct, COVID, all of, pretty much all of twenty twenty, we did not enforce the meters. I, I think the first several months of twenty twenty one, the meters weren't enforced either, so those two numbers you can't really look at. And then the rest of twenty one, pretty much, and, and we had a lot of staffing problems in here, not problems, but issues and needed the coverage in here, so she was not getting out as frequently. So with the purchase of the handheld device and this, for example, the one, the orange ticket we just discussed, that kind of fell through the cracks. Gentleman on North Seton Avenue, orange tickets, we didn't have the, really the capability of tracking them. We didn't have, really have the, she didn't have the time or the, pretty much the time to sit and go through each orange ticket and write past due letters, so with this new system, one, it freed up her time to then go back and issue the letters for long overdue parking tickets from the previous orange tickets.
Okay.
And so a lot of the, the monies this time that you'll see in this report, over five hundred dollars was just cleaning up orange tickets that were past due. So the fees increased with past due.
But I'm, I'm talking about ticket revenue.
Well, that, when you look, when you look at that, you're looking at the parking enforcement report is where you're looking at.
Yes.
Right, or the port, the port in the agenda packets? Yeah, so that includes everything, so if you look at this one, for this, this month, we had two thousand, six hundred and ninety five dollars in parking ticket money.
Yep.
Six hundred and seventy came off of the handheld device, new parking tickets for the month of May, June, May, May.
Okay.
And then five hundred and forty of that is for a truck that was towed that had a significant amount of past due tickets. Five hundred and ten of that was from the old system, the orange tickets that people received the past due notices and. essentially finally paid their tickets. And then the nine hundred and seventy five is from flagging the registration.
Can I interrupt you there though? So when I looked at the numbers for twenty seventeen, eighteen and nineteen? What, what do those numbers mean?
They are, they all have the same.
So they were an orange ticket or a pink ticket, then they were, then they were orange. The ticket's written, it's put on the car. Don't you log that or you log it as soon as that ticket's paid?
Yeah, Amy keeps a, the old fashioned method was it's a, a big box and then she puts the ticket, the orange tickets in. The new system, it's all automatic. So we don't need to have a copy.
Okay, so if I look at twenty seventeen with a total of five thousand one hundred forty dollars that entire year, and then you have like, you know, five hundred this month, two twenty five this month. I'm just throwing some numbers out there. I actually have all those numbers. I didn't write it down here, but what do those numbers signify? So like if January was five hundred dollars for ticket revenue, what does that mean?
So if you look at the report, which page is that on?
It's fifteen.
Okay, it's all messed up now. Let me look at this month's, help me explain it.
Yeah, so the main thing, the reason why I was prepared to talk about May of this year. The main reason why you see a significant jump in parking ticket revenue is because our new system is significantly efficient. So day twenty one, if a parking ticket isn't paid, it automatically sends that person, it generates the, the code mandated letter. That say you get a parking ticket, you don't pay it, you'll get a letter stating you have thirty days to pay or your vehicle may be flagged. So usually people pay within that first thirty days. Or if not, Amy flags the system. So back in two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty, Amy was specifically in-house helping out with phones and everything else. So, you know, things get backed up if when she has twenty other jobs she has to do. So we're finally getting caught up with their system. So that's why you're seeing a significant jump because we're catching up from five, six, seven years ago of old tickets that were just outstanding.
We're going after people from five years ago? We thought they would just be.
No, no, we're required to do that.
Okay, so wow. All right. So the old numbers then, it's because people didn't pay.
Exactly, yeah.
And we're catching up to them now.
Exactly. Yep. That's why you see a significant jump.
So Mr. Ritz, maybe you're looking for ticket count to ticket count issued in a timeframe? As opposed to income related to ticketing? Does that make sense?
Possibly, yeah. I would, I would like to see, I mean, it's, it just seems really weird looking at this because it's like, it's pretty pretty normal. And then all of a sudden, there's a, you know, it shoots up like that. So I, I guess the way you're explaining it to me, once we're getting caught up from things that are not paid for all these years, it's going to come back down.
That would be my, my guess. And if you look.
Guarantee that though.
I would love to go back and look at twenty seventeen numbers also, because if you look at meter money, just essentially in the month of May, there was about a little over a thousand dollars in meter money. There were months back in twenty seventeen that the parking enforcement report wasn't even a thousand dollars. So people are putting, people are putting money in the meter. So we are collecting more money on the meters. There's more part, and then you had sixteen hundred dollars in parking permits. People are going out, are coming in and getting the three month or six month or year parking permits also.
They were separate line items though, in that report. I'm, I was just looking at ticket.
Oh, I was looking at the total, not like I was looking at this month. So I was looking at the total number. Yeah.
Like this month, I think it was, was it twenty six, twenty six ninety five?
So with the new system also, we have the ability, a lot of the problem with the orange tickets in the system is we had no ability to flag out of state. Essentially, right? Or run out of state tags. So we had no way of following up with all Pennsylvania, Virginia DC, any out of state tags. So there was no way to follow up with those because we didn't have the ability to run the tags or flag the tags. Now with this new system, we have the ability to do that. So the letters are being generated now to follow up with the tickets. And that's, so yeah, you're going to see a jump and then it will even itself out.
That's an excellent point that I missed that, you know, like I said, sixty percent are out of state, Pennsylvania, New Jersey. Out of state. So we weren't able to collect that out of state money at that time. So.
I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to pick one anybody.
Sure, sure.
Back there in the quarter, but I, it just, when you look at it, the surface, it just, it's it's a head scratcher. Cause I mean, it was fairly constant all those years. And then all of a sudden, the first five months of this year, it's like, wow. That's, it's, it's a real eye opener.
Right. No, I, it, it's a very valid question. I've asked the question also when I look at the numbers and you know, I look at them to see where we're at and you see this month and it, it is a significant jump, but there's, there's reasonings behind it.
So in a perfect world, the new software, the new meters would help out.
It's all going to come together.
Absolutely.
It might help out more though, or it might be generating more tickets anyway. You know, I mean, it's, if it's more accurate and out of state, people not paying and.
Yeah, it just really depends on the day. You know, Amy can get in here some days and be slammed with a million other things, farmer's market pool, and she might only be able to get out one day. Sometimes she can get out twice. So it really just depends on the day.
Okay, I just, yeah, thank you. I wanted to, I just wanted to point out something that was nagging, nagging me for several months now.
Commissioner Burns, yes, sir.
Either I missed it. I know we discussed it at one of the previous meetings. Time.
Oh, sure. You want me to talk about that now, Mr. President, or you want me to move on?
I don't see it anywhere.
Oh, that's in the ordinance.
It's in the next agenda item.
Yeah, next agenda item.
Because I was looking for it there and couldn't find anything. So.
Sure, yep. We can hit that then.
Okay, so let's stick with this just for a moment. So are there any further comments from the board related to this at this point in time? Okay, so two questions I have, one for staff, one for the board. For the board, the fine after twenty days, is twenty days some Comar dictated item or is it, can we bump that to thirty days?
I don't believe that's Comar.
Okay, all right. So we have some latitude as a board. Okay, great. Next item relates to Frederick City. Frederick City provides a grace period of one hour when a ticket gets issued or they had been in the past. I don't know if it's been modified. But if one gets to a parking office, you can have the ticket rescinded. Is that something the board would be interested in seeing a one hour grace period? Because I know there's been a discussion about that from some folks who've contacted me.
I mean, that makes if people utilize it.
Sure, okay.
I think now too, with this scanner thing, it might be, you know, real time results, you're not
Sure.
You know, going through a stack of orange tickets and trying to figure out compare records.
Mr. Davis, any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm I'm in favor of that.
Okay.
Anything to help the, the citizens.
So I, I will give you an example today. I'm not in favor of that, but that's completely up to the board. We had a young man come in today who received a parking ticket for not putting any money in the meter on West Main Street. And so he was extremely belligerent. He told me what he could do with his citation and it wasn't appropriate. He told me to F off and flip me off because he thought it was ridiculous that he got a ticket because he didn't put money in the meter down on West, and this is further down West Main Street. So he made it in within his ten minutes of getting the ticket. So essentially, we're going to reward people for not putting money in the meter within the hour. And I, I just, I have a problem with that. I know how staff gets treated.
But do you think everybody's going to do that?
It's seemed a lot here lately. It really does.
That's pretty sad though, that mentality.
It was pretty bad today.
I think that those individuals, I know there's people out there, they get irate, I get it. And I, I think there's other people that would be calm and collected and they're like, hey, that's cool. I don't have to pay this. Thanks.
Right.
I, I don't think everybody's going to come in fist swinging.
So you, you, so let, let's just, for argument's sakes, I go and I park my car at a meter for six hours. I don't put money in the meter. I come out at the sixth hour. My ticket's sitting there. I just, she just wrote it. I come running in. So I just parked for free for six and a half hours on Main Street in front of one of the businesses in front of the bank.
But ultimately, won't that change when the new system goes in? Because then we'll be able to document that the parking meter ended at two PM. They got the ticket at six PM. It's not going to be that efficient.
No, I, I mean, I, I understand the concept and I've heard other municipalities do that. I've heard other municipalities that'll do it at fifty percent. They'll knock fifty percent off the ticket. I mean, there are options around it, surrounding it.
My concerns for sure are the, the handicap parking spaces. So someone gets a ticket at a handicap parking space, they can come in. You know, plead not guilty and get away with the ticket. Same with left side parking, it's extremely dangerous. Any of the tickets really, the whole, the reason for tickets are to help public safety. I mean.
Well, turnover parking and, you know, assist the businesses, make parking available for the residents. And I, I understand why. But I'm also looking at the a, a notion of graciousness that we have an opportunity for, and it's already modeled elsewhere. And Commissioner Willetts, yeah, I, I'm sorry that someone came in was a total unkind, inappropriate type in their behavior. That is not appropriate. We don't accept that. We don't want that. We want civility. But I think also if we can build in this grace period thing. And it might not be now, but when we move forward to the digital program, I think we could increase that civility. And I also think that it, it makes the case a little bit more airtight when it doesn't happen. It is, you know, when it was me and I made that mistake down in Frederick City, I was really appreciative of that opportunity. And I, I think more fondly of Frederick City because of that. So I, I think it is something to consider. And also I'd say, and this would be horrible, but bear with me. Maybe you don't take the call. Let staff do it. Yeah, I know, I know. Okay. So just a thought, you know, have a, have a ticket office. And Mr. Davis might be there. No, I don't. Okay. So any thoughts, Mr. Davis? No.
Oh, no, other than, you know, our phone has been blown, my phone has been blown up
with tickets.
The, the last, the last month, and I can't figure out why. From people that in, in developments that don't even have parking meters and said they were four inches, parked four inches off the curb and things like that. And, and I, I don't get it. I don't get, I've had business owners that have set their clock or set their, their phone. So they, they know when their meter is going to run out and they come out and they've already have a ticket. I, I just, and, and they, everybody's telling me it's coincidence. I'm not buying it. I'm going to be honest with staff. I'm not buying it. And, and unfortunately I get to see it every day because I don't work, you know? And I see it and, and I'm, I'm just not buying it.
Without, without any, without my recommendation, which I've said to everybody would be, it'd be great if you guys went up, saw the, see the water plant, sewer plant. If anybody's interested in tagging along with Amy on a parking enforcement day, I think she would be greatly interested in having or greatly happy for somebody to tag along with her. Because as, as everybody on this board knows, there's two sides to every story. Do we always get everything right? No, we're human. We don't always get everything right. But I would encourage you to come out and see it. And I think it's a great, it's a great opportunity for, for you to share your concerns, any of you to share your concerns with Amy on, on the street. And she can share your concerns with her.
I do see it. I, I see it every day. And, and just like today, there was no businesses open on West Main Street except for the firehouse. And I saw Amy walk by that firehouse five times today. We had a little fundraiser running where people were running in and running back out within five minutes. And people got tickets. Now that's not a coincidence.
So she issued, I looked it up because I got the email. I looked it up. She issued one parking ticket on West Main Street today.
We were warning everybody. We had somebody out front and said, put, put money in your meter because you're going to get a ticket. You know, and we shouldn't have to do that. This is, you know, we, one, one day we're talking about how we want to be small town Emmitsburg. And the next day we're out going after anybody that pulls up into a parking spot. And, and I just don't that, that's not us. That's not us. And so we're not business friendly. I had, I had a a storefront for rent. And the people didn't come in there because their business was going to be an in and out type thing. And other business owner says, that's not going to work for you because you're going to have people come in to get your product and they're going to come out and have a fifteen dollar ticket.
So then I challenged the board to come up with something in the code that can address that.
I'm challenging the staff to use a little bit of courtesy and common sense when they're giving tickets. And we've had this discussion. I've had the discussion with the mayor. We need to use common sense. We don't need to be up giving out tickets at lunchtime when the restaurants are packed. Or at, at, at nine fifteen, where somebody goes into the restaurant to get breakfast at eight thirty and comes out at nine fifteen and has a parking ticket. We need to use some common sense. And I've asked and asked and asked, and I've tried to do it you know, behind the scenes and it's not working. I, I get, I get head shakes and go, yeah, we, we know there's a problem, there's an issue, but nothing's happening.
And these are overtime? You're talking about overtime parking?
Yes, yeah. Well, not to talk about the local funeral home, getting a parking ticket for parking the wrong way on the street during a funeral. That they've parked that way for the last fifty five years and all of a sudden this month, it's an issue.
Commissioner Donald, I believe this was part of our closed session.
Okay, all right. So we want to move that, Mr. Davis, would be okay for you to, I'm fine. You know, it just needs to be, it needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
The buck stops here with me and we've gone back and forth on this, how to, how to read the code and, and some previous meetings, I bought in the code book I have from nineteen eleven. It's that big and that big and about that thick and the thing we have now. We just need to change codes and give them, we don't want them showing any favoritism to anybody if they're going to do it in front of the fire hall, which is, I, 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 I understand, we've talked about, Mr. Davis so many times, but then they have to do it on the other side of the street or on East Main Street for everybody. And we just, maybe the thing is we don't have, give tickets downtown for a while and just see how, how that works. So it, because it's, it's, it's just too, it's, I, I can't give them any more direct, that's me. I can't give them any more direct of support than to read the code. If the code says that, you do it and you don't show any favors. We don't want, one of the criticism before was there was some good old boyism. And that's what I ran on against in two thousand eleven. And I'll stick by that right now, that I don't want any favoritism and they're under my direction. Read the thing if the machines aren't working or if she's doing to, I'll, I'll give you another example today. This would come up in subdivision, Brookfield. A, a vendor, construction workers' truck was parked on the wrong side of the street. She very courteously, our lady, and said, you're parked the wrong way. And he informed her and in a vernacular that's not becoming this meeting, she went around and, and, and said, give me a ticket. So she could roll around, hold up behind him. And said, I'm, I'm going to write a ticket. They got out and got her face. And I'm, I'm telling you right now, we're not going to, she, we're putting her life in danger in the environment, the craziness that's going out there now. And I'm I, I'm, I'm just going to instruct her that if that's going on in the subdivisions and they, you know, whatever. Do not put your life in danger. And it's not your call, it's going to be my call. Stand down. I don't want that. And it's unfortunate, the time is very dangerous times. People are going off. Every variety of person is, is doing something crazy and I just not going to have the staff. But it's my, it's my call. Read, read the book. Let's change the book, come up with something, tell us what you want them to do. And, and I can understand, I don't want anybody up there. I, I've been up there twice and, and and that, and I've gone up the street, I saw people and I said, do you need a quarter? And I, I offered them a quarter. One, one thing would maybe, maybe get a couple of bags there that that go on there for the fire company or something. But, but we have to do it for other people too. If we're going to let, I, it's just one thing, come up with it is, but she's, she's not to call balls and strikes. The code is the code. And if we have bad equipment, which we're replacing now, then let's do, get the proper equipment. We're getting some runaways from other states. We never were able to get together. That's the increase for revenue. It's not revenue. This is totally inspired by, let's make it spaces available to the town, businesses downtown and and they're changing natures, the business. And they're changing natures, the business downtown. They're all destination now. They're not, there's nothing convenience down there or that you go in. Shop out except, except the one, the wonderful thing they have vigilante hose does, but, um. So I'm telling you right now, she's not going to go into communities and, and, and have that, that risk to her. She doesn't have a bulletproof vest and she get hit with something or whatever. This person got right in her face. And, uh. Just stop, but it's, it's me. And, 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 and it's you. Give us, tell us what you want in that book. You vote on it and, and we'll, we'll enforce it. That's all. Thank you. That, that, that's how heated, this not heat thing is just conversation. Commissioner Davis, you and I have talked about for three months on this thing. And it's a one, a wonderful exchange of ideas and I agree with you a hundred percent. I want the small town. I've done everything. Possibly can, got seven million dollars to put downtown to make it look like a small town. Thank you.
So, okay, um, let me back up, back up, back up, back up. Before talking to Mr. Davis, um, Mr. Burns, I'm going to turn to you with the question. The grace period, you were, I didn't get to you on the grace period. Would you consider the grace period, uh, when we move forward to the digital ticketing?
I mean, we could absolutely talk about the grace period, but I think on multiple occasions tonight, we was talked about the wild, wild west and not allowing.
Right, you know, okay.
We've done this. We do it every year from Thanksgiving till New Year's. Right, where we pull and it's parking for free.
Right.
So we already have the case study done. In those last, what, two years that I've been here and another one this year, where the case study has been done where, hey, we're not charging for parking from Thanksgiving Day. Until New Year's Day. And, you know, we're, we're saying wild, wild west, but our case study has already been done in those last three years to see. Is it the wild, wild west or is it not? Are we having issues with people parking with the exception of snowstorms, obviously? Okay, that's the exception to the rule, but is it really the wild, wild west when we do that? And, you know, I don't think we need to have the argument here right now that, oh, we need to do it for a month and prove it's the wild, wild west because we've already done it for. I've been three years and Commissioner Ritz, Commissioner O'Donnell, you guys have been here even longer and it's always been. That one month grace period, correct? And is it the wild, wild west when that happens? Is it out of control? Is parking all over the shop? Are we having major issues and, and things of that nature during that timeframe? Uh, that's the question I'm posing to the, the two of you.
Well. When I did my little study going back through the numbers, um, which I found out tonight might not actually make sense due to the old orange tickets. But it was fairly consistent for, for December. There was. One month was really low. That was twenty twenty.
Right.
I believe so. It was a height of COVID, but, uh, December was. You know, it, it wasn't a big, um. Huge disparity there.
Right. And I think the, 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 not the counter argument, but the argument to add to that equation too. Is that when we did do that beautiful job on the square, we took away how many parking spots on the square for those local businesses? Was it four or six? Four, so one on each corner.
On each corner.
So now we limited that as well. So we put the pressure on the businesses from that standpoint that everybody was parking further away. And we obviously have discussed this evening about the possibility of one-on-one south. Seaton being a parking lot and things of that nature. And that will obviously improve what's going on and, and things of that nature, but. It's, this is always going to be contentious. Topic because, you know, while we're trying to grow businesses in town and do the things, we've taken away parking. We've had different issues and, and things of that nature. So. It, it, there's never going to be a proper answer to this. And ultimately it's going to come down to the five of us figuring out in the code, how do we change it so that it reads the way we would like to see? So that the town can then enforce what we would like to see as well as what the citizens would like to see.
You know, and a point was raised this evening, I believe, Mr. Commissioner Davis stated it, it, you know, this, the. The fee structure, it might make more sense to enact something new once the new meters are in. You know, that are more accurate, that are, um, easily calibrated. And then, then the fine after twenty days, I believe Commissioner O'Donnell was leaning towards potentially like a thirty day. Like a month, is that what you were?
A month before the rate, the, the penalty jumped.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so with that in mind, um, we're looking at an item for consideration that staff has put in front of us. So to that end, uh, do we want to table the vote on this and wait till we have the digital items in front of us or? Do we want to move forward on this? Mr. Ritz, I kind of got the impression you were leaning toward tabling it, but.
You know, that wasn't my going into it tonight. No, I, I had no. No thought process. I wanted to hear everything tonight and I, now that I hear this and. That's what I'm leaning towards.
Okay.
Actually tabling it.
Mr. Burns? Okay, Mr. Davis.
Well, I just want to clear one thing up. This whole thing isn't about. The fire department and their fundraiser and the parking there. This is about everyday occurrences that we're hearing about. So it's not about the fire department.
Right.
That was an example.
That, that was just one example, you know? I think the one that, that flipped me over the, over the top was a funeral home. When you give the funeral home vehi- vehicle a parking ticket, when they're parked for a funeral, that just took me. Totally over the top and I said, we're out of control. We, we're totally out of control. That vehicle's been parking in the same spot for funeral for fifty-five years. Or longer and all of a sudden, June of twenty twenty-two, it's illegal. I, I, I just don't get it. I, I, I just. For the life of me, I've tried. I've tried to figure it out. I've tried to talk to people and everybody I talk to, they go, you're kidding, right? I go, okay, I just want to make sure that I wasn't missing it. I, I, I just. I'm done.
Okay, um, Mr. Davis, I will ask you about the tabling. Do you have any? Thoughts on that to table this item? To go to that, okay, as am I. All right. So at this time, we will therefore table agenda item number four. And that is. I got the proper name, uh, approval of policy twenty-two dash zero two, update the parking fees and fines for consideration. Staff appreciate the, the effort you put into preparing. This is appreciated, uh, based on consensus from the board. We will be tabling this. I don't have a recommendation for bringing this back yet, but. Uh, I will look forward to hearing that from you and maybe the August meeting or the September meeting. Like, like a recommendation to bring it back. And I'm not actually bringing it back.
Okay.
Okay.
If, if I can just ask for any commissioners to please email the mayor, Kathy and I, any suggestions?
Sure.
For changes.
Sure.
We'd greatly appreciate that and we can bring you back a clean plan.
Okay, uh, that's appreciated. Okay, with that in mind, we now turn to agenda item number. Five. Approval of ordinance twenty, twenty twenty-two dash zero two, update to title ten, parking for consideration. Is that so tied into this item that?
It's not.
Were unable to move forward? Okay.
They're separate.
It felt that way. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Um, as before, I'm going to highlight the changes from our meeting in May. Um, so I'm on page thirty-nine now. Um, based on feedback from Commissioner Ritz, I added the definition of curb to the definitions section. Curb means a cement, concrete or as- asphalt raised structure designed to delineate the edge of the roadway to separate the vehicular portion from other property, which may. Include pedestrian walkways. Turning to, uh, two pages further, forty-one. I'm sure, uh, violations and penalties. This is ten, twelve, one thirty. Um, the only thing I changed was D, I added seven by debit or credit card at three oh one, six eight, three, five, nine, eight, one. So our new, uh, software does allow credit card payments, which are actually cheaper. Uh, to do it via credit card on the phone or on our website than being, paying a credit card in-house. So it's. Five dollars if you pay in-house by credit card, by phone or our website at this number, um, it's three dollars. So it's actually cheaper. Uh, parking meters, chapter ten sixteen, uh, ten sixteen parking meters, uh, section ten sixteen, zero five zero, operation of meters. Uh, at the request of the board at the previous meeting, I removed the letter D. It shall be unlawful to park for any parking meter space when the meter is not properly functioning. Um, I removed this at your request. Moving forward, many more pages because nothing was really changed. Page forty-five. Of your agenda packet, hearing rights, section ten twenty, zero five, zero. B one, um, we had a large discussion versus and versus or. So the town manager will be in any kind of hearings at the request of, uh, residents or, um. Those who get parking tickets or boot, or excuse me, boots or impoundments. So the board that oversees the boots and impoundments will include the parking manager before it was or. And Mr. President, that is the only changes that were made. Um, the only recommendation from commissioners was Commissioner Ritz to add the curb. So we didn't make any other changes per our previous discussion. But I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Ritz, I'll turn to you first, um. Curb, the definition thereof satisfied that it's present and in its form?
Yes, and the reason I asked for that was due to some, um, right. Citations up on North Seaton Avenue. There, there's a. Curb, kinda falling apart a little bit, but years of. Parking on it. I think Mr. Mr. Deathridge could probably, um. Or vouch for it when you've been there since the mid eighties. It's probably been in disrepair since then. Yeah.
Okay, on a total side note, will that be repaired when we see the, uh, North Seaton work?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It'll look beautiful. So now if this passes.
That to look forward to if nothing else.
If this passes tonight, then. Should residents parking along there be extra special? Careful not to be parking on that curb. I told him, you know, try to not park on that. So the mayor, Kathy made a decision that since the curb is in such disrepair, that tickets will not be issued on it. Okay. Plus it's going to be going away. It's going to be going away soon. Like two, two, three years maybe. But when the new curb comes, that's a different story. Well, you know, have a sidewalk next. Have a sidewalk. It'll, you know, nice. Plenty of space for parking. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'd only seen cars parked up on the sidewalk. It's just.
So Mr. Ritz, that hits the mark in your book.
Yeah, no, that's thanks.
Right. Any other questions related to this or comments or concerns?
Yes, through Burns. Yes, sir.
So I found where it says eight to eight and that, that's, that's fine.
I'm sorry, just back up. You found what please?
Uh, the time. Switch changing.
Oh, very good. Okay.
Nine to five to eight to eight.
Okay.
Now. Gettysburg's the only one that is like that.
Oh goodness.
They also charge for Sunday, one to eight. Um, I cannot find anything for Thurmont. Frederick City, however, is still nine to five. Is there? A reason that we're discussing the eight to eight versus nine to five more so than anything else?
Yes, so statistic, statistics show that businesses need constant turnover. And the reason for the parking meters and changing them from eight to eight is because we need to incent, incentivize people to keep moving and keep moving along. For our businesses in order to keep, you know, having patrons. So we're recommending eight to eight in order to continue that move. If you look at our streets past six o'clock, I'll still say it is the wild, wild west in my opinion. It gets crazy, um, especially on Fridays and Saturdays. Uh, there's nowhere to park. So we're recommending moving it from eight to eight. Is Amy going to work eight to eight? Absolutely not. Um, it's going to be a, if it's passed, it's going to be a, uh, rotating kind of schedule whenever she gets a, a second or a chance.
I guess I'm concerned about the statistics source in that. Is it talking about what are, what types of businesses is it referring to it's trying to serve? Because I look at what we have downtown now and it's the hospitality, leisure and hospitality or dining and hospitality, however categorized it. It seems a longer duration seems to, a longer duration in the parking spot seems to serve. The business better than a one hour turnover in that folks at the outhouse are going to stay for a period, you know, have dinner, have drinks. Uh, folks at the Palms have dinner, have drinks and then so on. Um, I can't speak to the tattoo parlor. I don't know about their turnover, but, um. That strikes me as a different model than, for example, what we would see down at Silo Hill where people pull in, they pick up their prescription, they pick up their. Drake, well, used to pick up the Drake cleaning, pick up more of a service industry, more of a high turnover. So, um. I don't know that, uh. I don't know that I'm in favor of the eight P M piece, like the eight to eight piece. I don't know that's going to serve the square businesses well. Um, I, I understand the intent. The other part is again, I think, you know, when, when we, when we delved into the square program. One of the things that was put in front of us was signage, signage, signage. And, uh, yes, we might be the town with lots of signs. I've heard that accusation from time to time. But, uh, I think if we have a coordinated effort to have appropriate signage and identify where our public parking is available, uh, that exists. Currently, I think we might be able to alleviate some of these tensions related to parking. I know that up on DePaul Street, there is public parking in abundance, uh, near Saint Joseph's. Uh, that is an untapped resource many times. Uh, I also know that it's, it's, you know, completely necessary for Saint Joseph's. You know, for, for, uh, for the parish. But if we were to indicate where these parking areas are where people could go, they're going to be asked to walk a block. And I think that's within a, a valid, like parking shed because we were, we discussed that ages ago with Ed McMahon here. Uh, from the Urban Land Institute, uh, but it's signage that gets people to where they need to go. And I'll give, I'll give anecdotal and dice. I'm sorry, I'm rambling on this, but. Uh, I was in, where was it? Uh, I want to say Carboro, North Carolina. And in Carboro, uh, they had an off-street parking setup and I wanted to get to a certain set of businesses. And man, their signs were awesome. They were not, they were not unattractive and they were a great way finding signs. And I think that's something we have to do with our square program is finish our square program and show people how to get from your parking spot off the square. To the square. And I think once people learn that once, I suspect it will stay with them forever. So. Uh, that's where I am on that.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Sorry.
I will tell you, the businesses are not in favor of additional hours. Matter of fact, they'd like it to be nine to five.
Interesting. Okay. Okay. So do we want to modify that? Would you recommend?
And then one more question.
Yes, sir.
Why two hours versus three hours? Like Gettysburg has three hours and they're obviously more of the tourist destination, but they also have all the restaurants on the square and things of that nature.
It's the three hours past five or?
Or no, like the three, like a two hour, like, so it's written in here unlawful, unlawful for any person except persons with parking permits or parking signs have been granted in place. Stay in the park. For two hours, more than two hours at a time.
That's just the standard with the American Planning Association. So, you know, they did the studies. That's where I was reading the studies from.
No, that's fine. And that's why I was pulling up all the different, uh, municipalities around us. So Gettysburg's three hours. Um, still can't find anything on Thurmont.
I just found Thurmont's or is nine to six.
Okay. Frederick, nine to five. Um, and different things that nature. And obviously Frederick with their market street.
So Mr. Burns, would you like to modify it for us and make a suggestion?
I would like to see three hours because I think that allows especially from the restaurants.
What page are you on?
When to?
Yeah, where are you at?
I'm on page forty. Ten dot twelve dash zeros, zero nine zero.
Oh, two hour parking. Oh yeah, that's, we didn't change anything there.
No, I, I understand that. And I'm just bringing that up as a talking point right now.
Sure.
Okay, so is there any modification?
That would change especially from, you look at, you know, tattoo parlor. I don't know if anybody's ever sat down for a tattoo. A short process, um, restaurant. The hair, if you're getting your haircut and dyed, that might take a while, um, and, and things of that nature. So.
But. Oh, I know the reason why it's two hours. It just came to my head. I'm sure Amy's back there like, why aren't you saying this? Our meters are capped at two hours. That's the reason why.
What will the new meters be though?
I, I don't know that answer, but I can get that for you. I think it's whatever we make it.
And that's up to us.
Yeah.
We, we call that shot. So when the time comes, we have that, uh, capacity.
Commissioner Burns, is the section that you're talking about following then A and B, it says east, it's east and west main street except where meters are installed.
Correct.
So what, what areas are you?
Well, because the meters are only two hours. So that limits you to a two hour parking.
Correct.
Technically by, by the code.
Okay, so if we change it to three then.
We'd run.
Would we need A and B anymore?
Right now we'd run the situation where the meters, you know, obviously have to go back out and feed the meter at the end of two hours. But once the new meters come in, we would be able to bypass that and possibly be three hours.
Gotcha.
This is actually where meters are not. If you read it, East Main Street, except where meters are installed and West Main, except where meters, nevermind.
It's, I read it twice too.
Yeah, it's, it's not clear.
It's worded differently. Yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Burns, are you making any proposals for change or you?
No proposals right now, but I think it's something that once the meters, the new meters are, and we, the decision is made on whether or not they're two or three hour meters, then that can be. Uh, an addendum to the, the code at that point.
All right, so institutional memory, that's a point. All right, so institutional memory, that's a point we want to hold on to. Okay. Mr. Davis, are there any changes that you want to see related to the ordinance? Any modifications? No. Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Ritz, any modifications or changes you want to see beyond the current update related to the curb language?
Um, what did we? What do we finalize with the hours right now?
About to ask.
The changes.
Have not.
Okay.
And again, we have that authority right now to modify.
Okay, I didn't know if we were leaning towards something.
No, I'm just, it's open. That's all.
Okay.
Yeah. If if one wants to, one may, if one chooses not to, they may not.
I would. I would like to see right now to stay nine to five until the new meters are put in. At which point that's gonna have to be readjust because the hours and everything of that nature are going to be addressed.
Nine to six, you mean?
Nine to five.
It's nine to six.
It's nine to six now.
Yeah.
Okay, so nine to six then.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Just change, keep that nine to six.
So, Mr. Ritz, then any thoughts?
I support that nine to six.
Okay, so right now we're nine to six, so status quo for that. All right, so.
I had nothing else. Actually, everything else was.
So, Mr. Ritz, based on what you've heard from the board, it seems like we're at a point where we can move forward on this. Is there anything else you need to add from the planner's perspective?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, very good. All right. So at this time, then, is there a motion? Let me make sure I get this item correct. Sorry.
I got it.
Sure.
Page thirty eight.
It's thirty eight. Thank you, sir. So therefore, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero two with the update to title ten parking? Commissioners.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero two update to title ten parking for consideration with.
Okay, go ahead.
With the change in ten dot sixteen dot one or one thirty to nine to six instead of eight to eight.
Okay, the one thing I'll ask you, just if you would consider modifying. So for consideration, those terms we need to drop from the motion. But besides that.
Which way?
It's I understand. This would be so.
Oh, yeah.
Staff, we're clear on that. We have clarity on that.
Yes.
Very good. All right. Is there a second for Mr. Burns's motion?
Bring it to vote. Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, sir. Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion related to this item? I will add something. Mr. Burns brings up a good point. The commissioners bring up good points related to institutional recollection. So when we go to the minutes of this, I know we'll go a summary of the minutes, but also I think we need to go a little bit more in detail for this item as we move forward. So we can tap into what the board's expectations are related to when we see this with digital parking brought forward. So beyond that, I'll call the vote unless there's any other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Motion fails, yes, at two to two with Commissioner Sweeney absent. And we now move forward to agenda item number six.
I just want to explain my no vote and that's supporting the local businesses. They were not in favor of this and so I'm their voice.
Yes, sir. Moving forward, we go to agenda item number six. On my page.
Yep, parking boots come.
Here we are. Approval of ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero four collection of municipal charges for consideration.
All right, thank you.
Let me interrupt for a second.
Sure.
I'll back up. Mr. Davis, thank you for your explanation. All right. So staff, we turn this over to you for agenda item number six.
Yes, thank you. So the proposed amendment adds language to the enforcement chapter of the general provisions title. Providing that any fines for violations of the town code taxes or assessments made against real property in the town shall be treated as a lien on the property to be collected in the same manner as municipal taxes. This gives the town another tool at its disposal for the collection of unpaid fines, taxes and assessments. The town's authority to treat these charges as liens comes from the Maryland Code Annotated Local Governments Article five dash two oh five D two. The amendment will have a retro active effect. I want to give an example of why this is needed. Oh, okay. For example, the East Main Street property that we all know we're having a lot of issues with. Obviously, we've been finding them every day for high grass and high grass, I mean, four feet tall. We did finally get a court order to go in and mow the property without this ordinance, we cannot charge this property owner for our mowing. So it's for fines like that that will have to lean the property in order to obtain our money. And it's not money because we need it. It's funny because we need to have some kind of a penalty for not taking care of your property for two years at a time. So this is an extreme measure that we are using very lightly.
Also, it was recommended from Leslie Powell, the town attorney, because she's finding there was no recourse in several of these different cases.
Our our ordinance and we we got this out of the M M L conference that if we have an ordinance that says your grass can only be eight inches high, we have every right to go on to the property and mow without going to court or anything like that. Does our ordinance say that that we will be able to go in and take care instead of you running to court five and six times that we can go in and mow the grass and build the people and?
This current ordinance does not. However, Kathy put that on my desk and we were gonna talk with the mayor about that and hopefully bring it back at a sooner than later.
Yeah, because that's I think that was one of the many good things that we got out of the conference that we have the right to go in and and clean that mess up. And and without you running to court all those times.
Yeah, and without this ordinance, we wouldn't be able to charge them. So.
Okay. Just to make sure we have that whole packet there.
Yeah.
Thank you for for providing that example. I was just ready to ask, sure, if you give us an example.
Yeah.
That's I know that's more of a drastic one, but that's that's a really good.
It's been a weird year.
That property in general.
Wealthy Avenue is another issue we're having. Yeah.
Question then, though, is when we do impose the liens, who pays the lawyer fees?
We can actually tack that on per the code to that. Maryland annotated code allows that.
So
Oh.
Just from prior experience with not personal, but dealing with somebody that had a lien in the past. We need to make sure that's clearly stated when they pay their fines and things of that nature because we had a situation where we had a resident who paid their supposed fine only to later find out they were paying the lawyer lawyer fees and not their fine. And there's been a huge fight since ongoing since then.
Sure. Any further discussion related to this item? No. Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the to accept ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero four collection of municipal charges for, sorry, collection of municipal municipal charges.
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for Commissioner Davis's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion that's been made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Sweeney absent. Okay, no. All right, now we turn to yes, thank you, doctor. It's like that right now. Agenda item number seven, approval of deed of easement for the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park two for consideration. We turn to staff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is basically for the federal stone project. They bought the East Industrial Park number two. The planning commissions approve their plans. The Board of Commissioners is required to approve the easements. The easements include a landscape, snow stores, utilities, stormwater management, forest conservation, a sewer abandonment and stream buffer easements. These are to be accepted as requirement of development. The long term forest conservation agreements will also be approved. I won't bore you and read through all these, but these are required per our code to have. The town's not required to maintain any of this, so it's not going to be a negative effect on our on us. So that's my presentation. If you have any specific questions, I'm feel free to answer them. But if you want to approve them as a whole, as stated in the agenda packet, that's okay.
All right, so we turn to the board. Questions, comments, Mr. Ritz?
This is a comment. It looks I'm just relaying this to this property, what it was before. Listen, mixing it up. I thought there were some issues with some easements back in the day. Is that right?
Is that the sewer abandonment easement where you're?
Maybe that's what it was.
Yeah, it's a reversal reverse property.
Yeah.
Probably thinking about the the sewer.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, this takes care of that. I think the board previously approved that abandonment at a previous meeting. This I just included that in the package just so you can see the language of that. So.
I guess, well, you know, I've been seeing it too on the planning commission.
Sure.
So I know I I like. I like this.
Yep.
Actually, I I was reading it, so I did.
You read all of it.
I skimmed over a little bit, but but I did read.
It's a tome.
Yeah, this was prepared by our attorney. So.
All right. Any other comments or concerns related to this item? Now, therefore, I turn to agenda item number seven one more time. Is there a motion to approve the deed of easement for the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park two?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for Commissioner Burns's motion? Second. Thank you, sir. Motion has been made by Commissioner Burns. It has been seconded by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further discussion at this time? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries four to zero with Commissioners Sweeney absent. We now turn to setting agenda, the agenda for our August meeting.
Yes, I'll start no administrative business to consent items. One will be Mark Long or reappointment of Mark Long to the Planning Commission with a term of August fifth, two thousand twenty two through August fifth, two thousand twenty seven for consideration. We will bring back the appointment of a person as an alternate to the Board of Appeals of the term of August first two thousand twenty two through August first, two thousand twenty seven for consideration. Again, we'll mention anybody interested in being an alternate on the Board of Appeals. Please reach out to the mayor or myself. Regular agenda items, I have eight. Want first item. They're easy. First one is the approval of the two thousand twenty two election judges for consideration. Proclamation making August second, two thousand twenty two National Night Out for consideration. Number three proclamation declaring September, two thousand twenty two National Recovery Month for consideration. Pro number four decline to accept dedication of four open space lots at Brookfield conditioned upon approval of the Brookfield H O A for consideration. Number five, M S four permit updates. Number six proclamation declaring Sister Anne M Higgins, the town of Emmitsburg poet laureate for consideration. Number seven proclamation to care declaring Lutsk, Lutsk, Ukraine as a sister city to the town of Emmitsburg for consideration. And number eight review and approval of ordinance twenty two oh eight update to election candidate name posting for consideration. It's essentially to put it in alphabetical order by last name. Needs to be specified in the code. Because the way it's written now just says alphabetical order and we prefer to do it by last name or first name, however, the board decides. But I think it's easier just to do it by last name.
I thought we changed that last year to alphabetical order.
Because it was did, but we did in alphabetical order by first name. In some conversations that Ms. Shaw and I have had with different places, the common practices to do it by last name. People were kind of confused when we did it by first name last year.
I hope I voted no on that because that doesn't make sense.
I don't know.
I'm going back and look.
I don't know. So we just want to change it to the last name alphabetical order.
Okay.
And those are my items.
Okay. Board members, do we have any administrative business items or agenda items to add to the August first meeting? It doesn't look that way. Okay, so with that in mind, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented for the August first, twenty twenty two town meeting as presented by town staff?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Motion has been made by Commissioner Davis. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Sweeney absent. Okay, with that in mind, any last comments, board, related to tonight's meeting? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the meeting?
I I'll make a motion to clo to close our.
Okay, our public meeting, yes.
July eleventh town meeting.
Okay. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? I will add that we will be having a closed session after this. And as a reminder, we will not be having a public session following the closed session. I'll also ask the board, would a five minute recess be?
Thank you.
For all. Very good. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four to zero with Commissioners Sweeney absent. Good night.